Good evening. The November 14th, 2023 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. Meering and modeling the way our students begin each day, I ask that we observe a moment of silence at this time. Please join me. Thank you. Board Member Campbell, would you please read our commitment statement?
I sure will, Chair. Thank you. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. And for the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off their electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than 5:40 p.m. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Board Clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Lori Conrad, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Dr. Sarah James, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Olivia Biddinger, Donnellan High School.
Here.
And Bryce McTeer, North Marion High School.
Here.
Thank you. Always great to have our student board representatives with us. Dr. Gullett, please introduce the member of your team who will be helping us with tonight's inspiration and pledge.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the board, nice to see you again. It's my pleasure to bring forward Dr. Hembrook, who is going to introduce to all of us something that's not unfamiliar already, our Student Space Flight Experiment Program, and introduce some very special guests with her tonight. So, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Thrower, board members, and Superintendent Dr. Gullett. I have the privilege of introducing a Marion County Public School student, Collins Sheldon, whose spaceflight experiment was selected as the winner of the Student Space Flight Experiment Program sponsored by the National Center for Earth and Space Science Education. The Student Space Flight Experiment Program seeks student-designed microgravity experiments to launch to the International Space Station where it is operated by astronauts. After four to six weeks in space, the experiment is returned to Earth for analysis by the student team. Collins developed an experiment which required a critical understanding of science as a discipline, but also technology, engineering, and mathematics. Ms. Sheldon's flight experiment was reviewed through a formal two-step process and then additionally reviewed by NASA Flight Safety before her experiment was selected as the winning student-designed microgravity experiment. Collins worked with multiple people who helped her with the development of the experiment as well as the multiple trials that needed to occur before she could even submit. And some of her team's supporters are here today. Ms. Lisa Dorsey, the gifted resource educator and STEAM lab teacher at Dr. N.H. Jones; Ms. Dee Reedy, a biotech teacher from North Marion High School. And on November the 9th, Collins Sheldon presented her flight experiment as part of the launch program and conference for the SpaceX CRS-29 launch at the Kennedy Space Center. And later that same day, Collins and her supporters watched as her flight experiment was launched into space. I would like to now introduce to you Collins Sheldon, who will share more information about her experiment and her experience, and after that, she will lead us into the pledge of allegiance. Collins?
Hello. My name is Collins Sheldon, and the title of my experiment is "Does Microgravity Affect the Protein Productions of Eschrichia coli?" We will conduct protein testings of E. coli and microgravity, as it may offer greater efficiency than earth-based tests with gravity. With this knowledge, we will then develop medications to combat various diseases, including cancer, diabetes, influenza, and COVID-19. We will then analyze the results of protein production in both microgravity and ground-based experiments to determine if protein production is more efficient in the former. I would like to thank my teacher facilitators, Mrs. Lisa Dorsey and Ms. Dee Reedy, and I hope that you can continue this program in the Marion County Public School System. Thank you.
I'd like to give Ms. Reedy and Ms. Dorsey a moment as well.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Dorsey, the gifted resource teacher at Dr. N.H. Jones, and I just want to say it was such a privilege to work with Collins and with Ms. Reedy, and we made just a phenomenal collaboration team. So, real quick, I just wanted to talk about all the collaboration that happened to make this experiment go to space. First of all, we were having to email and Zoom with researchers around the world. We had kids throughout the whole program that were Zooming with a professor at the University of Idaho. We were emailing with somebody from the University of Oxford in England, trying to get the science down right. We also had to collaborate outside of the school system as far as with the community, the business community. And we hooked in with USA Scientific here in Ocala, who really helped us with their scientific knowledge. And then to be able to get our results once the experiments come back from space, we have attached ourselves to Bioutility at the University of Florida, who will help us read the protein levels. In addition to that, the experiment started at Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary School, and Collins, when she started the process, was in elementary school, and then she went on to middle school. And so, we had to collaborate kind of with all the middle school things going on, and then we also needed a lab. Elementary school doesn't have the type of lab that we need to do the level of science required to make this go to space. So, we partnered with Dee Reedy up at North Marion High School to make the project go to space, and it has just been an amazing STEAM scientific adventure, and thank you for supporting us.
Thank you.
So, I have a wonderful biotechnology lab at North Marion High School, and the only reason that I have that lab is because for 15 years, I've received a lot of support from CTE at Marion County, from the school board at Marion County with the grants that were received, from various different entities in Marion County that have helped buy all of the equipment that we use. So, the science that happened is not just Collins, who's fantastic, or just Ms. Dorsey, who's wonderful, or even my lab. It's everyone at Marion County who has worked so hard for all the students and all of the projects that we come up with. Hey, let's do this. And you guys fund it and take care of it. So, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Will everyone please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please stay right there, all three of you. And I know the board...
Taking a picture with them?
Yes, we definitely want to take a picture, and then we also want to share some compliments and comments with you before you head on up the aisle, which always seems to happen too fast. So, we'll go ahead and take a picture, and then we'll share our comments and compliments. Ready?
I'm sorry, sir. I'm just kidding.
Just a little bit. Just scoot in just a little bit.
Squeeze in, man.
There we go.
Yep, check it.
All right, here we go. And one, two, three, couple more. Take that picture now. That's a lady. And one more.
We got about a thousand. Do you say hi to those people up there? Give me some.
Thank you. I'm just kind of... I don't know, can I always come up with something?
Gosh, this is just so exciting. We've been following your journey and cheering you on for such a long time, and to have witnessed the launch and knowing that experiment was on it was just incredibly cool. And all I can think of, Ms. Sheldon, is to infinity and beyond. And I know the rest of the board has comments that they would like to make, and special thanks to your parents, I think they're both here, and to Ms. Dorsey, and Ms. Reedy, and just everyone that has had a hand in making this happen. You definitely have a fan base, and we're so, so proud of you. Go ahead, anybody?
I guess I'll start. I remember when this started a couple of years ago, when you were at Dr. N.H. Jones, and now you're at Howard, and so this is continuation of you being so smart. So, keep, let that continue on and keep doing what you're doing. I expect great things out of you in the future, so congratulations.
Thank you.
I love seeing girls in science. My brain is not a science brain. My sister's brain is a science brain. She's an engineer, and she was given lots of opportunity to flourish as a gifted student growing up, and in science and math, and I love that those opportunities are available to you as well, so that you can enrich in the things that you love and the way your brain works. So, good work, so proud of you, and I love that North Marion got to be a part of the project.
Thank you.
So, speaking to Dr. N.H. Jones, because my children also were Dr. N.H. Jones alums, I guess you could say, just super proud of the work that continues to come out of that school and with Ms. Dorsey and all the work that she does there. And again, another partnership with Ms. Reedy, this is just, it's starting a trend, I feel like, in our community and the fabulous work that's being done here, and it's just great to see Collins. I can't wait to see what's next. Like, we're excited to follow your journey. So, I'm just so proud of all that you've done, and really, can't wait to get the results back. That's what's going to be cool. When you were saying all the potential that this research has for all the different cures of, you name it, it has so much potential, and the fact that you're thinking that way now, you're going to go very far and do all kinds of amazing things. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Collins, I just want to say congratulations. We're super excited about your experiment and the journey that it's taken, but I love, especially what you shared when we were down on the floor, that this spirit of collaboration, you think, tells the story of what Marion County Public Schools represents, and that you hope this journey continues so that others' students have the same opportunity that you do. And so, thank you for your mindset and for your commitment for several years' worth of work to get this literally up in the air. So, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Again, awesome. All right. Gosh, talk about inspirational. Okay, we will, at this time, go ahead and move on to another great topic, donations. At this time, we would like to recognize a special donation the district has recently received. $1,000 has been donated to Howard Middle School from the Marion Cultural Alliance to help with off-site band concert expenses. And we are always so grateful to our generous donors. They contribute in so many ways, science, the arts, you name it. We have great community support. Dr. Gullett, would you like to make a recommendation on the agenda?
Yes, certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair. I recommend approval of the agenda for the November 14th, 2023 school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of the following items: D-21.1 and D-21.3 that have been placed under discussion; Item C-19.1 that has been pulled and placed under discussion; and Item D-21.2 that has been completely withdrawn from the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. May I have a motion on this superintendent's recommendation? Motion by Vice Chair Conrad?
Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Oh, I guess all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the October 19th, 2023 Administrative Briefing and Work Session? Motion by Board Member Cummings?
Second.
Second by Board Member James. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 24th, 2023 school board meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Board Member James, second by Board Member Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Ms. Martinez, can you please provide the proof of publication?
The notice for the November 14th, 2023 board meeting ran in the Ocala Gazette on November 3rd, 2023. The proof of publication has been attached in board docs under proof of publication.
Thank you. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board meeting this evening. Thank you, Attorney Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at this evening's meeting, either regarding one of today's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure that the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board clerk. Before you begin to wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. Remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the Procedures for Public Comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the state may be directed to an administrative staff member following the conclusion of your comments. For furtherance, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students or their families are also strictly prohibited. A speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Madam Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez, do we have any speakers tonight?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we will move on to Item 8.1 for information. Board Items 8.1 through 8.5 are information-only per Board Policy 6345. The superintendent is authorized to approve and execute any construction contract change order that will increase the construction contract amount by $25,000 or less, or that will decrease the construction amount. Moving on to approval of consent agenda, may I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items C-10.1 through C-20.5, with the exception of Items D-21.1 and D-21.3 that have been placed under discussion; Item C-19.1 that has been pulled and placed under discussion; and Item D-21.2 that has been completely withdrawn from the agenda. May I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Vice Chair Conrad, second by Board Member Cummings? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve Grant Application Florida Diagnostic and Learning Resources System Associate Center?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, motion by Dr. James, second by, sounded like, Dr. Campbell. Thank you. Dr. Gullett, do you have anything you would like to add on this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We put this item under discussion because it's a large dollar amount. Dr. Hembrook is available with any questions the board may have, but simply just to bring awareness to the services that are requested through Fidlers. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, is there any discussion?
I just have a brief comment.
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to say I'm thankful for this grant in that they provide a lot of services, not just to our community members and our families, but also to our teachers and instructional staff. I was trying to look through on our school webpage. It shares some of the services that we provide through this, and so I'm just really thankful for those dollars and how we're able to use them.
Chair? Thank you, Vice Chair. Go ahead.
The only thing I wanted to mention is, we don't normally reference this as Florida Diagnostic and Learning and Resources System. Most everyone in the district knows them as Fidlers. So, when you hear Fidlers, then you're going to know what this is, that we're approving the grant for Fidlers, and so that's the only comment that I wanted to make, because those in the district understand what this means and what the work is that's being done. So, again, we don't normally call them by their elongated name, but Fidlers is what this is about. So, thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Campbell, is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. We'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Professional Services Selection Recommendation for Construction Management Services for Osceola Middle School New Gymnasium Project 24-109? May I have a motion? Motion by Vice Chair Conrad?
Second.
Second by Board Member Cummings? Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Dr. James.
I just wanted to make mention that I'll be recusing myself from the vote. I was on the committee that chose this contractor, and they're going to do great work, so we're really excited.
Awesome. Board Member Campbell?
Unfortunately, I'm also recusing myself from this vote. My business does some personal work with the chosen organization here, and so if they are chosen, I'm going to recuse myself from this vote as well.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell, and thank you both of you for your transparency. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Three, zero, with two, recusing. Do you have everything you need? Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, moving on to Item C-19.1. May I have a motion to approve Amendment to District Staffing Plan for 2023-2024 Staffing Plan?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. James?
Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell. Board Member Cummings, I see you pulled this item, and you wish to have additional discussion?
I do, I do. Chair, Chair Thrower, I'm having an issue with this one. I understand we asked for some things from transportation, and this was one of the recommendations that came back. What we were asking for transportation was a solution, or some solutions in helping with getting students to school on time. This recommendation came back in a work session that they needed to add an additional driver trainer, and I'm having an issue with this one because this is a pretty good position as far as salary. However, we currently have two trainers in the position that just do training. We have a recruiter that does training as well, and we have a safety coordinator that also has the ability to do training. So, we have four people in that department right now that can do training. And the biggest part of the issue I have, we only have five or six people in the queue to be trained, so why do we need another trainer at this point? Maybe at some point in the future, we may need a trainer, but I can't understand why we would need a trainer to add that to amend the staffing plan right now. I understand that there are some that may be in drop, but they're not currently leaving right now. So, I have an issue with this one, and I have to vote no on this.
Thank you for your remarks. Board Member Cummings, Vice Chair Conrad?
I just want to know, there was some discussion about our trainers, and they were driving currently, and so I just wondered if Ms. Tompkins would mind coming forward and just refreshing my memory on that conversation.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Tompkins.
Good evening. Good evening, Chair Thrower, board members, Superintendent Dr. Gullett. So, yes, currently, we do have two driver trainers. They do drive open routes, and it's a dual job responsibility they do. So, when we have new bus drivers, they have to do 20 hours of an online course, they have 16 hours of classroom courses, and then they have an average of about 32 hours behind the wheel, and then they have to pass a three-part CDL test. So, when they're doing their training portion on the bus, it allows us to take our driver's trainers and actually fill open routes while they're also training that new applicant.
Thank you. I'm sorry, did you? That's good, thank you. Is there any other discussion from the board? Dr. James?
Just to clarify, and Ms. Morant can give me a head nod, but approving the position to be on the staffing plan does not mean that the position will be filled immediately at all. It may be posted in the near future, and we may get applicants, and it may get filled, but approving it on the staffing plan does not indicate immediate hire. Is that accurate? Or was that a little, it's a little wishy-washy?
Could I speak to the intent of the position?
Sure.
Thank you. So the intent would be to post and hire this position immediately for a couple of different reasons, actually two main reasons. So one, by filling the position, it's going to give us another person who's able to train. Our trainers are not able to test the same person they train by regulations. So if I'm a trainer and I do the online course and the bookwork with the staff member and the road work, I'm not then allowed to test that same person. It has to be someone different. So in part, we are able to add more people to be trained at the same time. We're then able to utilize that person as a bus driver, which also fills another route, which gets, you know, another load of students to school on time. But a big portion of this is that in order for us to have a CDL tester, it takes three years from the point we hire a trainer to become a CDL tester. Of those four individuals mentioned, two of those individuals are in drop, and they're both able to train and test. If those two people decided to go ahead and vacate the position, and we were to hire that person in this asked position today, it would take us three years before that person is able to test the first person for a CDL. So it's really about planning for the future and doing what we need now that will give us the benefit of another driver to drive an open route, to be able to do six months. So in order to be a certified trainer by DOE and Florida Highway Safety and Motor Vehicle, you have to be an apprentice for six months, and then you take a 40-hour course, and then you're certified to be a trainer. In order to be a certified CDL tester, you then have to be a trainer for two years. After you're a trainer for two years, you have to take a 50-hour course, and then you have to pass a test, and then you're certified. So six months apprentice, two years a certified trainer, another six months, it's three years before we have someone to test. If the two people vacate the position, because they're in drop, then we will only have one person on staff able to test. And therefore, since only one person can test, that's all they will be doing, and they're not able to be on the bus and do any of the other training parts.
Can I ask one follow-up question? Would you, would it be an assumption that we could potentially sunset one of the other driver trainer positions when a retirement does occur and go back to only having two driver trainers when a retirement happens?
Based on need, yes. So we only have, so to go down from two driver trainers, it depends on whether our safety coordinator, and we currently have a recruiter who does training, but 80% of her week is hiring people, you know, going through the interview process. So it all depends on the situation at the moment, which would be the recommendation that if we're, we don't have the need, if we get to a bell schedule next year that gives us our true three-tiered approach, then it reduces the number of routes, which potentially reduces the number of individuals needing to be trained, then we look to see if we need to fulfill all those positions as well.
Understood. So potentially, we could see a shift in the district staffing plan when it's presented to us?
You could. But to put it in perspective, since June, these unsung heroes, which they are, they're behind the scenes working everything, since June 1, they have trained 57 new drivers, 10 of which were temporary drivers that help us only in the morning.
Ms. Dobins, Madam Chair, so since June, they have two people, pretty much.
Those four individuals.
Four or two?
We have two driver trainers.
I know you have four, I know you have four that can train.
Correct.
Of the four, how many actually get to train?
We revamped that when we changed supervisors in that department on July 1. So that's, what we did in June was different than what we did in July.
So two did this training?
Essentially, two did it in June, but four started in July.
Okay. The issue I have, again, to be fiscally responsible to add this to the staffing plan right now, I think this position probably, what's, how much is this going to cost?
So this position, we always budget to the high end, so if we were to hire someone and place them at the highest salary of that position with fringe of $70,000, please keep in mind that you also get a bus driver out of this.
You get a bus driver out of this, but right now, how many people are waiting to be hired? How many people are we waiting to train right now?
I wish I had my email in front of you, but we have.
I could tell you, six.
We have more vacancies than that, sir.
You have more vacancies?
Yes.
But how many people are actually in the process of being hired right now, or in, waiting to be trained?
I don't have that in front of me, but that will be in your updates that come out when the superintendent sends their updates on Fridays.
So I saw, I saw, I saw it yesterday. There is about six people that's waiting, and some of them have been waiting for weeks. So in the meantime, we're going to add a $70,000 position while we're waiting on two, six people, and we already have two trainers that can do the training. I see, I see the future, doing it in the future. I just don't see adding it right now. That's my concern.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Cummings. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Dobins, anything else you wanted to add?
The only thing I would add is, we, not only do we do new hire training, we do have retraining that we're, we have to do, so that's part of those training, but two of those trainers are also, one is the safety coordinator that goes out anytime there's an accident or things like that, and the other one is also our recruiter.
Thank you, Ms. Dobins. Dr. Gullett, is there anything that you would like to add at this point?
I don't think so. I think Ms. Dobins covered it. I mean, it's the transportation team's request, and certainly understand the questions, but I know we're trying to do everything we can to make sure that we get our teams, our bus drivers trained and in the field as quickly as possible. But we will continue to monitor. I mean, if the board does approve this, I will tell you that, as we always do through the budget cycle, we will amend as needed. I can tell you that we will do that, so this will be monitored, if the board wants to move forward and approve this.
Okay, because I did have a question about that. Thank you. Board Member Cummings?
How does this help? This all started with us asking about buses being late to school. How does this solve that issue? How does this resolve buses being late right now? I know about the future, I understand that, but how does this impact, because you still got kids being late to school? If we only have six people in the queue to be trained for drivers, and it's a process, how is this going to resolve that? If we already have enough trainers in place to train those six people?
Thank you, Board Member Cummings, and I'll just quickly say, I see this department as having been quite stressed and quite bare bones for too long. As a board, I know we've been asking for immediate, short-term, medium-term, and long-term solutions, and I appreciate this item being brought forward in the spirit of forward planning and getting ourselves out of this mess and keeping ourselves out of this mess. So those are my thoughts on the topic. If there's no more discussion, Board Member Campbell?
I have a comment and then a question. My comment is going to say, thank you for bringing this forward, because I think that you've made some very valid points, Board Member Cummings, that I understand the forward thinking, and I understand the thought process behind that, but if we do already have two people, I guess they're filling in on routes. I understand that, they're filling some of those, that void that we're having right now, but if their actual job title is to be a trainer, and if we were fully staffed, then we would have trainers right now that didn't have that much work to do, and we're about to hire a third one. So I understand, I get where we are right now. We're not fully staffed, I completely understand that, but if we were, which is the goal, then we potentially would have more than enough to do the job that they would be hired to do. So that's my comment. My question, though, is, this item, C19.1, which is now D21.4, isn't just this amendment. So if this particular item happens to be voted down, it doesn't only impact the transportation amendment, it also impacts the special education amendment. And so that's my question, I guess, is that if we were to vote one down, we would have to vote them both down in the way that the item is currently listed on our agenda?
Right.
Okay. And that's the way I see it. Is that the way you see it as well, Attorney Powers?
You could amend it, you can amend to accept one and not the other if that were the board's decision.
Okay.
And then the other could be taken up at another time, if that's what the board's pleasure was.
Okay. We haven't had the vote yet, so we don't know where it's going to land, but in the event that it does fail for whatever reason, then I guess we could, we could address the second amendment in this item if needed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And that's how we would do it, Attorney Powers, just vote on this motion and second, and then introduce an amended motion?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, I think we need to go ahead and vote. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes 3-2. Thank you. Now, I'm going to need a motion to amend this.
No, it passed.
Oh, okay, all right, we're good. Thank you. Creating more work for everybody. All right. Thank you very much for the robust discussion. It's very clear that the board is committed to improving transportation and wants nothing more than to see that happen in the short, medium, and long-term range. We'll move on to board committee reports and concerns. We'll start with a couple of meeting reminders. The next board meeting has been scheduled for November 27, 2023, at 9:00 a.m. The following administrative briefing and work session has been scheduled for December 7, 2023, at 9:00 a.m. And now we'll move on to committee reports, concerns, and comments. We'll start with Ms. Martinez.
I don't have, nothing, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Powers?
Nothing further than legal.
Thank you. Dr. Gullett?
Thank you. I do have a few items. I will start with, the first one is a request of the board to consider. We have, I've just learned, we have a number of requests for the school board to hear for early reentry, and because of the timing of the end of the semester coinciding with the return in January, it's going to take some time. So I would request consideration of a special school board meeting on December 18, if we could have a quorum to do that. And when I say there are a number of them, there are 13. So it is a significant amount of time. I know this is a challenging time of year, but I would entertain some consideration to that, if that would work, beginning at, I would propose it beginning at 9:30 a.m.
I would have to leave by 12 that day for a doctor's appointment, so I'm available until 12.
Thank you. Board Member James?
I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm good until about 12:30.
And you said, beginning at 9:30?
We can start earlier, but that would be, that would be great, if we could start in the morning.
Considering we have two board members that need to get wrapped up, should we start at 9?
Start at 9. We can make it. We could, I think so. Let me check.
Be out, correct?
No, school's still in.
Yes, it's still in.
And 9:00 a.m. is kind of a typical time if we do a morning meeting.
That's fine, 9:00 is fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
And then we should still have a quorum, even if it runs a little bit late, but at that point, we usually are pretty, pretty quick to work with those kids.
Would you prefer to start earlier? The reason we were starting, I had to look at my calendar, the reason we were starting at 9:30 is because I was hosting principal lead meeting, but I could ask for forgiveness from our principals and possibly change that, and we could start earlier, if the board is available.
Okay. Can you let us know, or do you know right now when, how much?
I could, I could work. I'm sure they're a wonderful team, they'll support us making some arrangements. So if we can, if the board can start earlier, let's start earlier.
All right, 8, 8:30? I'm fine with anything.
Me too, I'm good.
8 o'clock?
8 o'clock.
Thank you.
All right, great.
Thank you for that. So that was the hard part. The second part is, I just want to recognize that it's American Education Week, and so thank you to all of our staff. This is through the National Education Association. We appreciate each and every one of our amazing team members, like you saw tonight. So thank you to everyone. I also have a bit of a surprise to announce, varies positively. I had the opportunity this morning to visit a school, as I usually try to start my days, and I was looking for a special principal to recognize, and I found her in some terrific training with some colleagues through the University of Florida Leadership Development Program we have here on MTI. I am pleased to announce that Michelle Sino is our Principal of the Year, representing Ocala Springs, so.
Yay!
Anyway, I would scare them half to death when I kept telling them I've been looking for them. And I'm also pleased to announce that I had the pleasure of going out to another school to announce our, recognize our amazing Assistant Principal of the Year, who is Ms. Rebecca Cook from Horizon Academy. So please join me in congratulating Ms. Cook. Thank you. Very, very exciting day when you can recognize terrific, all of our terrific team members. Thank you to Mr. Christian and the team for a terrific Veterans Day ceremony in our park. I've had tremendous feedback from our veterans. We are working very closely with our veterans in the community, and thank you, board, for supporting that and coming out. Great, great support, and I just want to say thank you again to all of our veterans. Thank you to the employees. That turned out, I extended an invitation to each of our veterans who are our employees, and we have over 260 of them on record, and I know we have more. So thank you for their service to our country and to our school district. And finally, just want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. It's a pleasure to serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett, and we'll move on to our student board member representatives. Ms. Bittenger?
Hi. I only have one comment, and it was about something I saw earlier in the meeting agenda, which is an independent contractor agreement with the Kaleidoscope Learning and Therapy Incorporated, and I just wanted to say, I thought that was a great cause, and I like seeing that we're getting more therapy for students that need it, for that exceptional student program, and also the Young Parent Program in MCPS, that we're starting to give that opportunity to those students who have children, to have childcare available to them so that they can continue their education. I just think those are both really great things that are happening.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bittenger, and you're absolutely right. You know, we do all we can to meet the needs of each and every student, wherever they are and whatever they need. Thank you for those great comments. All right, Mr. McTeer?
I just want to say that I'm starstruck by what Colin did in her experiment. It was very innovative, and to be that innovative at such a young age and for it to carry on is a great thing to see, and it just makes me want to work harder so that I can be probably innovative like her, too.
Right.
Well, thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. It has us all kind of reaching for the stars, so that's, that's great. All right, I think we'll just continue on to the other side of the dais and with Dr. James, and just move down as we go.
Did you hear me?
Yep, I did ask Attorney Powers earlier, but if you've thought of something, you're welcome to share it.
Yep. Thank you.
So the Veterans Day performance was tremendous last Friday. Last year, it got canceled because of our very odd hurricane in November, and it was wonderful. I cried during one of the songs, which is so sappy, but I, it's just so sweet watching our kids who are just so special and magical, and the Shady Hill group is just so tremendous. They do such a wonderful job. It was a beautiful performance. I was blessed to be there. What was also amazing was the School Choice Expo. I am blown away. Every year, the notch just gets moved up and up and up, and collectively, our schools are leveling themselves up with each other, and that's what I love. And I have, I have a text from Ms. Johnson I want to share with you all. So Ms. Johnson, who's Principal of SPAR, had the first opportunity to So Ms. Johnson, who's Principal of SPAR, had the first opportunity to attend, because we have put a choice program at SPAR. And she texted me and said, brag moment, we won the District Red Ribbon Contest, and we've had so many calls for tours after the Magnet Expo. And she could not believe what was around her. It was her first experience, and she is so excited that people are coming out and want to tour her school, and they're willing to take the truck to SPAR to see what we have to offer there. And it was, it's a great event. It highlights all of the wonderful things we do, and I just, everyone there did an amazing job. Love Girls and Science, and shout out to Collins, doing great work. I think that that is amazing. I wanted to update, I'm so grateful for Mr. Ayers and Dr. Gullett working on updating our attendance report. I know that there is discussion in the community about how full we really are. Thirty-four, I think, I just did some rough counting, thirty-four of our schools are at 90% or greater of fish capacity, which is not even reflective of real-life capacity. So fish capacity would be an underestimate, in my professional opinion, on how full a school really is. So that really helps highlight where we are and how our schools are functioning. I did want to ask for an update fee on impact fees. We pulled the item from the agenda, and so I'm just looking for either Dr. Gullett or someone from your staff, if they have an update on where we are with that.
If I may, Madam Chair. I certainly will. Thank you, Board Member James. Yes, I, as a result of a couple of meetings, the last included with my staff, meeting with staff from the City of Ocala, the, our, our staff tomorrow are meeting with staff from the county, Marion County, and from the City of Ocala. And they will be meeting and talking with Benish, who is the one who's guiding and providing the guidance on what the questions are that need to be answered. So having them all in a room to be able to process what that is and come to some finalization, I hope, with, with data, as soon as that meeting concludes, I will provide an update to the board. But looking forward to having the opportunity for them to be in a room together and process through what the consultant is guiding on, as I shared with the City of Ocala. We're not necessarily asking the questions. Benish is asking us for this information, and so having them together to talk at one time, I think, will be very beneficial. So we'll provide an update as soon as that concludes.
So my question would be, we have a board meeting December 12. Is there a expectation or suggestion that we would be able to see an ordinance on the December 12 meeting?
I certainly think we can. We have nothing on hold right now. So if that's the, if the board would like for us to put a hold on there, we certainly can. I can't, I don't know how long it'll take. I can tell you from the meeting that we had last week, there was some concern over taking some time to gather the data, but I, it would really be speculative of my point, at this point, for me to say whether or not they could do that in a couple weeks, or if it would take longer. But certainly entertain, if the board wants to put a hold on there, we can certainly do that. And then I would defer to Attorney Powers with regard to any change to ordinance language. But certainly more to come. I just don't have all the answers, but I expect we'll have more, a lot more insight into how long it'll take after tomorrow's meeting.
And by our special board meeting on Monday, the 27th, we should be able to have an update as to where we are, and then potentially make a collective decision as to whether to put it on the agenda for the 12th?
Absolutely. I think either way, we'll have more information. Well, I hope we'll have more information, is my expectation, we'll have more after tomorrow's meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member James. Board Member Cummings.
Again, good evening to everyone. Always, I want to, I want to make sure we acknowledge our two student reps. Very bright young people. Future is bright for them as well. While I'm talking to the students, I do want to encourage our, our high school seniors that are in their second nine weeks of their senior year, that this is the time that they should have already done certain things. They're preparing to go off to college, or if they're preparing to go in the military, or whatever they're supposed to be doing, they need to make sure they're starting to do that. And if they're not, they need to get with their counselors and their, at their schools. And I'm saying that because I got one, and I'm on him every day about those things that he needs to do, so that he can move forward with whatever, whatever he wants to do once he gets out of high school. So I'm sure if I'm having that conversation, other parents are dealing with the same thing that I'm dealing with right now. So I want to encourage those students to, to, don't get senioritis this early. It's going to happen. That's going to happen. You're going to get it, but don't get it this early. Make sure you handle the business. Don't go through 12 years of school and then at the end, fizzled out. Make sure you finish strong. So I do want to encourage them to do that. Also, I'm continuing to, I want to continue to ask about transportation. I thank Ms. Dobbins, Mr. Ostonik, and all those that work in transportation, and they are working hard. I do know that. I don't want to ever make them think that I'm, I'm not appreciative of the jobs that they do every day. However, we got to get these kids to school on time. That's the biggest issue. We have to get these kids to school on time. And I know that we trying, we're trying to do some things to help, but that's not helping the students. The students are still missing instruction time. I know there's no magic bullet. If there was a magic bullet, we would have already shot it. We would have already fired that, that bullet. But the kids are the ones on the short end of the stick. They're the ones that's getting, getting penalized, and it's our job to make sure we get those kids to school on time. I don't want us to say that we're going to, that the routes over here are not as important as routes over there, because the kids that come to this MTI, they're, they need to get to school on time, and they're not getting to school on time either. So the thing that we said that would help is also not helping, even in this situation. So we need to sit down, so we need to have a real serious discussion about what we can do to alleviate this, because it's, we're hemorrhaging. I'm just going to say it that way. We're continuing to hemorrhage, and I need to see, I need to see some of this blood stop running out, because this is not good. When I'm getting calls, and I'm getting emails from parents every day about their kids not getting to school on time, it's not, it's not good. It's not good to tell a parent that we're working on it, we've been working on this since school started. It's not good to tell them, hey, if you can get your kid to school, and they're saying, I can't leave my job to take my kid to school. Some can, some can't, but they can't, they're still leaving kids at the bus stop if they can. And I know this is a nationwide issue with bus drivers, shortage of bus drivers, but we have to kind of figure out something. We have to, we have to collaborate, Ms. Dobbins, Mr. Ostonik. We have to do something. We cannot keep kicking this can down the road with this. So I'm going to be, I'm going to be mentioning this until we start seeing some, some improvement to some of the blood, to be get some Band-Aids on some of these things. So every meeting expect me to say something about transportation, because we have to get something done, because I'm getting the calls. I'm sure other board members are probably getting the calls and the emails. And it's not just a District Three issue. This is a, this is a Marion County Public School District issue. And I know people say, what about other districts? I'm not a board member in other districts. I'm not a board member in any other county but Marion County, so I have to deal with Marion County. So that's going to be a focus. And then finally, it is Thanksgiving next week. We have a lot to be grateful for, a very lot to be grateful for, to be thankful for. I want to encourage all of our staff and our students to take this time of the year, you should be thankful every day, but to really take this time to be thankful for the small stuff. The small stuff really matters. You don't really realize how much the small stuff matters until the small stuff isn't there. I think sometimes we stress the big stuff, but the small things matter. So I pray that everyone will have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Don't eat too much turkey, it's going to make you sleepy, and gain some extra pounds. But again, have a wonderful holiday.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. Dr. Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. Just a few notes that we approved in the consent agenda this evening. The first one is the approval of those two vans. So now we've approved vans that hopefully will help transportation, but now it's a matter of ordering them and when they get here. I know, hopefully, they will get here in a quick fashion, but there's no guarantee of that. Regardless, the school board has done what we were supposed to do in approval of the purchase of those vans. Additionally, tonight during the consent agenda, we had multiple school audits that we looked at, and kudos to College Park Elementary, Greenway Elementary, Lake Weir Middle, Lake Weir High, and Marion After-School Programs, who all had perfect audits that we approved this evening. A few others that were not perfect have been making improvements year over year, and so just always want to give a shout out where good work is being done. Over the course of the last week, several of the school board members were in Tallahassee for legislative visits with our legislative delegation and members from Marion County, and we're excited, I'm excited, of the good work that's being done. We have a wonderful delegation who is working diligently to ensure that education is looked at, even from a deregulation standpoint. So whatever that can be done to start opening up some of those pieces of statute that really make us question why they're there. So I just look forward to, as the board's advocacy and legislative liaison, I look forward to this upcoming session. I know that days in the legislature with the Florida School Board Association is coming up in January, and then Marion County Day is coming up in February, so there will be additional opportunities to be in Tallahassee and seeing our delegation there. But just looking forward to working with our local delegation, and specifically on the appropriation requests that we have asked for again. So we received an appropriation last year for Marion Technical College. Grateful to the legislature and the governor for approving that for us, but we are asking again, we have another ask, and so hopefully, that will again come forth with favorable positioning from Tallahassee. Also, wanted to give a shout out for the Veterans Day celebration. It was just great. It really, really was great. Everything from all the words, the script, the student pieces that were read, the student band, Howard Middle School's symphonic band. I would say they could rival any high school band around, for sure. They are great. Having just been at my alma mater and hearing a collegiate symphonic band, that Howard Middle School, those kids are great. And obviously, the shout out to Shady Hill, too, because I've heard the Shady Hill Harmony quite a bit recently, and they're just really, we just have amazing students doing amazing work. And the Veterans Day celebration was an opportunity for us to showcase many of those talents, the ROTC, Junior ROTC, all the things. It was the Joint Color Guard. It was just very well planned and executed, and so want to say thank you to all that were involved with that. Want to give a couple of other highlights. So in last night's City of Ocala Planning and Zoning Commission, the West Oak Community received another approval through planning and zoning for Phase Two of their project. And so as that project eventually comes online, the hope is that we will have impact fees, because we know that that community, among many others that are being approved, will have a significant impact on our school system. And so as we look forward, thank you, Dr. Gullett, for mentioning some of the comments in the meeting that we were able to have with the city and the county. Want to say thank you to outgoing Chair Craig Curry, Chair of, outgoing Chair of the County Commission, who got that meeting together, so that we all could get in the room and have some conversation, the chairs and the administrators and the attorneys, and where some misconceptions had occurred, and just able to clear the air. I think it was really an important step forward, and looking forward to hearing how the information that we believe Benish is asking for is available or not. And so hopefully, we'll get an update after tomorrow's meeting. So if, in fact, we do get an update tomorrow, I, as Dr. James said, about December 12, if we find in that meeting tomorrow, Dr. Gullett, and obviously, we don't know what's going to happen, but I asked in that meeting that we held together to say, if it is determined that the data is not available, then where do we go from here? And that wasn't really a conversation that went anywhere, but that was a question that I asked, so I state that publicly as well, to say, if the data that is being asked is not available, then I would request this individual board member that we actually put the draft ordinance on our November 27 board meeting that we currently have. But that's only, and we obviously would have to have the full board to say yes to that, but if tomorrow's meeting deems that what Benish needs to conduct the study the way a municipality is requesting it to be done, if that data is not available and doesn't exist, at least in the form that it can be generated, then I would request we move the draft ordinance to that. So obviously, that will be dependent on tomorrow. Then I wanted to say, yesterday, or this week, progress reports came out. Students, you have just a handful of weeks to really, really impact your semester grades. So I know my own children are getting that talking, too, so I'm saying that to all students right now. Also, kudos to all of our student athletes. I always like to give them props and recognition. We had some great fall sports that have already wrapped, and some that are in the process of wrapping up, and winter sports are kicking off. Soccer season started, weightlifting is in the process. I know basketball's in preseason right now, playing right now, basketball is. So just shout out to student athletes. And the last thing that I wanted to mention is also a shout out specifically to the ACE program at Bellevue High School. So my son had the opportunity and privilege to be a part of the Civil Rights Trip that just, they just came back last evening. And it is an amazing opportunity for our students to travel from Ocala to Tallahassee to Montgomery to Birmingham to Atlanta, walking Selma, they stop in Selma, walking, hearing teachers doing amazing education on the journey. The students just have a great opportunity to really walk in the shoes and the pathways that were walked. And my son came back saying, wow, wow, there just was a lot of bad stuff that happened. Yep, there was. But if you don't walk it, and you don't see it, and you don't remember it, we want to ensure that history never repeats itself. And so shout out to the ACE teachers and the program, Mr. Lucido and Mr. Stevenson, all the ones that went on the trip. And it's just a great, great opportunity. I'm grateful my son had the opportunity to participate. And finally, happy Thanksgiving. That's it.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. Vice Chair Conrad.
Yes, so not a lot of new. Everybody's kind of said all the exciting things that are going on, so I will try to be quick. As a newer board member, I just have to say, I'm, I keep being surprised when we take our trips to Tallahassee. I am just really excited about the support that we receive, the interest, the questioning, the honest takeaway from what some of the struggles that we're facing here in Marion County. And so I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm really thankful for our legislators and their investment in what we're doing in Marion County. And so I thought that was a great trip. It was very worthwhile, and I hope that it helps us move forward with some of our initiatives. I was excited about that. I serve on the Friends of Veteran Park Committee, and so the Veterans Day program was kind of a culmination of a lot of different pieces, and I, I really don't have words to express how fabulous it was. Our students did an outstanding, I mean, an outstanding job, not just performing, but waiting and waiting for their turn. You know, it was an hour and a half, was a good bit of time. Everybody was so well behaved and paying attention. I'm just really grateful for that partnership that we have. And I just wanted to tie in, our donation today was from the Marion Cultural Alliance, and it was to the Howard Band, you know, to help them move forward, and they absolutely were phenomenal. You know, you wouldn't have guessed that they were a middle school band, and it was particularly special for me. There were probably 12 or 15 students in the band that I had taught previously. And so it was just really special to see them continue to excel. And even and so it was just really special to see them continue to excel, and even things outside of the academic arena. So grateful for that opportunity, grateful for our veterans and our school partnerships, that those music teachers, you know, putting in lots of hours and time to get the children and their families to get them where they need to be for practice and so on. So I just wanted to give a shout out for that. Going back to our experiment and what Colin shared with us, I had the privilege of being in a science classroom this afternoon at Lake Weir High School. I am not a science person. I don't think I've ever had a science teacher, ever had a science teacher that was as energetic as a science teacher I was able to see this afternoon. And we have some really lucky students, because I left going, in my next life, I might want to teach science, because she had me that excited about what was going on in science. And so I just want to make that connection, that as our students are going through and they're finding their strengths and what they love, we have great teachers out there looking for ways to help them excel in those areas. And so with Thanksgiving coming up, and everybody, you know, has mentioned that, I just, so many of our teachers are really and truly invested in the lives of our students, and I, for one, am very grateful for that, because they have awesome opportunities. And so with that being said, I think that conclude, oh, one other question. I do, I would like an update on the Code of Civility. When I turn on the news at night, I'm saddened and sometimes shocked, and I just want, I think that's an important piece for us, especially thinking about transportation. I just visualize that sign on the bus window as the students are getting off the bus and their parents are there waiting for them, that we are going to treat each other with respect, even if we disagree. And so I wanted to get an update on where we stand with that, and if we're getting close to having it ready.
Madam Chair, may I? Thank you, Vice Chair Conrad. Yes, we are, I think that it's in draft already, proposed language board policy change to put that into board policy. Additionally, we have posters that are going to go out, so it's very, it's very public and very visual, even though it's embedded in the Code of Student Conduct, it's important to bring awareness to what that looks like. And the intention is not to, for it to be negatively framed. It's, this is how we agree to work together in partnership for our students. So, but thank you for asking. You will see a draft of the board policy that includes that Code of Civility.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett, and thank you, Attorney Powers, for your work on that. I know it was quite a process to iron out, but I am looking forward to seeing it moving forward.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Conrad, and thank you for, the whole board, for all the uplifting comments and adventures, you know, that you've had over the past couple of weeks, while we continue to acknowledge our challenges and problem solve those. It certainly doesn't negate all of the accelerating and amazing things that are going on across our district and in our schools, and that's why it's so important to come to school every day. How's that for a segue? Being at school every day really helps every student be connected, you know, to what's going on, and helps you find your niche. And to students, I would say, even if you don't feel like you've found your niche quite yet, you know, keep coming. You'll find that amazing science teacher, you'll find that amazing sport, you'll find that amazing something, and that is our goal, and we are going to walk our talk when it comes to our Code of Civility, and we are here to make this district great, and we're not going to stop until we're in a district, and, because we have A people, and we're always looking for more of those, so that's another hint. And I wanted to also acknowledge Veterans Day. My father is a graduate of the United States Naval Academy. I was actually born on F.E. Warren Air Force Base out in Cheyenne, Wyoming, and so it certainly means a lot, Veterans Day, and in our family with having a multitude of relatives that are and were veterans, and it is amazing to me how well celebrated our veterans are, and that's happening more and more. And I just found out right before this meeting that apparently Lake Weir Middle School had that's, had someone at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier laying a wreath, which, and I wish I had more information about it, it just kind of flashed across to me as a message, but I certainly wanted to acknowledge what I do know about that, because I can't think of, you know, anything more profound than having that opportunity. So I certainly hope that all of our veterans feel well honored, well celebrated, and very well appreciated. And then finally, in my comments, I would just like to wish everyone a very safe and blessed Thanksgiving. I hope you get the opportunity to spend time, you know, with family and friends and community, and relaxing, and probably eating too much, but that's part of it, and just enjoying the time that we do have off. So that concludes my comments for this evening, except for the fact I wanted to take a special moment to thank you, outgoing Chair Campbell, for your diligent service as our board chair this past year. Until you've sat in a seat, you don't really know what it's like. So thank you for everything you did to move this district forward. It is definitely appreciated. And before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through October 12th, 2023. Ms. Martinez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have one off-air.
Thank you, and we will get to that after we recess. But until then, may I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD-24-045, JD-24-046, JD-24-07, and JD-24-080, with educational services for the remainder of the 2023, 2024 school year, and the first quarter of the 2024, 2025 school year. May I have a motion?
So move.
Moved by Board Member Cummings.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion passes unanimously. This meeting will be recessed at 6:49 PM. We'll give it about five minutes to clear the room, then we will reconvene. Thank you very much.